We're now recording. Mayor, may I begin?
One second.
Okay. We've resumed recording. Mayor, I have a few preliminary matters. This is Zoe Burgess, City Clerk. The meeting is being held with a quorum of City of Westlake Council physically in attendance at the Westlake Council Chambers, 4005 Seminole Pratt Whitney Road. Mayor Roger Manning, Vice Mayor John Paul O'Connor, Councilman Patrick Paul, and Councilwoman Kara Crump, Councilwoman Katrina Long Robinson are present physically in attendance. City Manager Kenneth Castle, Planning and Zoning Director Nelsa Zacharias, and Engineering Director Suzanne Dombrowski are present and physically in attendance. Interim City Attorney James Sherriff is physically present. City Clerk Zoe Burgess is present via Communications Media Technology. Please allow me to confirm any speakers that are virtually present and available to speak. Denise Malone, are you able to speak and hear?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Donaldson Herring, are you able to speak and hear?
I am able to speak in here.
Thank you very much. Public comments may be accepted prior to the meeting utilizing the electronic comment card available on the city's website. Public comments are also permitted at the appropriate time during the meeting. The mayor will call for such during public comments, and you may participate at this time utilizing the system's virtual hand feature and waiting to be acknowledged if you wish to comment. Please note this meeting is being recorded both voice and video, and to remember your mic may be live. I will mute microphones that carry any feedback or interruptions. If you are a caller that has been muted, you may unmute yourself by pressing star six. Any person in the virtual meeting causing us disruption or being inappropriate will be removed. If I may also remind those physically in attendance, please utilize microphones so that the virtual audience and a clear recording of the meeting is produced. Thank you. Mayor Manning?
Thank you. Call to order the city council, regular city council meeting in the city of Westlake. It's Monday, September 13th at 6:33 PM. Roll call.
Councilwoman Long Robinson?
Present.
Councilwoman Crump?
Here.
Councilman Paul?
Here.
Vice Mayor O'Connor?
Present.
Mayor Manning?
Here.
We have a quorum.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have, on the agenda, we have one modification for this evening, and that is on your, on page B of your agenda, page five of six, item B at the bottom, City Goals and Objectives Annual Work Plan Update. We're going to be moving that agenda item to the second meeting in September, on September 27th. Yes?
Make a motion to approve the tonight's agenda with the modifications?
Second.
Motion made by Councilwoman Crump. Seconded by Vice Mayor O'Connor. Roll call. Councilwoman Long Robinson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Crump?
Yes.
Councilman Paul?
Yes.
Vice Mayor O'Connor?
Yes.
Mayor Manning?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, move to the public comments and requests. Again, this section generally allows for comments from the public to speak on any item not presented on the agenda. Each speaker will begin in a total of three minutes to comment. The public comment card should be completed and returned to the city clerk. When you're called to speak, please go to the podium and prior to addressing the council, state your name and address for the record.
May I receive no previous public comment cards? I will give the virtual audience a moment to raise their virtual hand or mute their device stating their name and address. If you're a caller that has been muted, you may press star six to speak. Please state your name and address. We have a comment from Ms. Torres.
Hi, Alicia Torres, 5847, Whipperwill Circle.
Thank you.
Um, I have two things. Um, the first is, you know, I want to tell the planning, you know, the city planners that, I'm not sure who else, but um, the 7-Eleven obviously is amazing. They really hit it out of the park with that one, so everyone is pretty elated about that. Second, I also wanted to compliment Carlos. I believe he's from the Finance Department. And Vice Mayor O'Connor, um, with the solid waste assessment, there was a lot of confusion at first. Um, people online just kind of panicking, thinking it was an increase in our solid waste bill, but Vice Mayor O'Connor and Carlos got on it right away. Carlos even amended the city's website to include an FAQ section with the questions and their answers that everybody was kind of asking. Um, so I just wanted to give, you know, those two well-dones. Thank you.
That's Alicia.
Thank you.
If you wish to make a comment, please raise your virtual hand. If you've been muted, please press star six to speak. Please state your name and address. Mayor, I see no additional comments.
Thank you. Move on to the consent agenda. We have three items on the agenda this evening. Approval of the meeting minutes, August 2nd and August 9th. And also approval of the finance statement for July. With, uh, there's no question or comment on this can be all done with a single motion. I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion to approve consent agenda by Vice Mayor O'Connor, seconded by Councilwoman Long Robinson. Roll call. Councilwoman Crump?
Yes.
Councilman Paul?
Yes.
Vice Mayor O'Connor?
Yes.
Mayor Manning?
Yes.
Councilwoman Long Robinson?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. We have no presentation for confirmation this evening. We'll start with our first item. First budget here. This is Resolution 2021-29, approval of proposed military for fiscal year 2022. If you could read my title, please.
Resolution 2021-29, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Westlake, Florida, approving the proposed add-to-law military rate for the fiscal year beginning on October 1, 2021, and ending on September 30, 2022.
Ken, are you taking this as?
Yes, this is the first, first part of the budget process. We had already announced that we were going to be doing the 5.125 mils as we have from the beginning in order to stay on objection to have balanced budget as we finish the funding agreement with the Matri-Golfer. This is the clarification of that action that you already did. It has to be as a resolution at this point.
Council comments.
I'm pleased that we're keeping the military, that we decided to keep the military exactly the same as it has been last year. We are not raising it, and I look forward to the day where we can lower that military. Those are my comments.
As I stated before, when the first we started coming in, you guys started getting, and we looked at that very closely. Yes, that's going to cut the scale. It's going to be, it'll be a more rapid progression with the commercial campaign. So if we have, uh, go further, do you have any further questions, comments on this resolution? Show none? Do we have a motion for approval? One way or the other?
Some rule.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Long Robinson, seconded by Vice Mayor O'Connor. Roll call. Councilman Paul?
Yes.
Vice Mayor O'Connor?
Yes.
Mayor Manning?
Yes.
Councilwoman Long Robinson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Crump?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Move on to item B, Resolution 2021-30, approval of tentative budget for fiscal year 2022. If you could read my title, please.
Resolution 2021-30, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Westlake, Florida, approving the tentative budget for the City of Westlake, Florida, and making an appropriation for the fiscal year beginning on October 1, 2021, and ending on September 30, 2022.
Thank you. Okay, open it up.
Mayor and council, in your package, um, to have the breakdowns of the proposed budget that's before you with the same budget that we went over in the past, uh, at the meetings. First off, you'll see that the property taxes that the proposed 2022 budget versus 2021, where the property tax covered about 37% last year is covering 51% this year, which does decrease the overall developer contribution and still accompanies the growth that we've experienced in overall administration costs, et cetera, that have gone up so. There's no real major changes other than the changes, the city attorney's budget from 17% down to 6% due to the changes we've had. Currently, at the current rate for the city attorney's office, uh, we're averaging about $13,000 a year, or $13,000 a month for the city attorney for the work that they're doing for us at this point in time. So our budget item of about 200 and some thousand should be plenty enough for what we're going to be doing over the next year.
Outside legal services, what is that? Or outside legal services?
Oh, that, in that, in that line item, we had to take care of showing the, um, changes from last year to where we are now on the outside legal services.
So use $95,000 for outside legal services here?
You know, 22, we don't have any outside legal services. Budget, we have a budget of $275,000 for legal services.
So we're going to come in lower.
Yes.
Does it make sense for us to actually budget for what we were projecting?
If we budget for it and don't spend it, if we drop to the bottom line, we're less than the shortfall that may have to be funded. So it's appropriate to budget where we think it's going to be, and then if we come in lower, try to bring it in lower. That also gives us some flexibility depending on what pops up over the next year that we may have to get involved in that would increase the time for legal.
So we can reallocate those funds? If we, let's just say, a scenario would be if we get six months, eight months down the road, and we see where we are, and that money reallocated somewhere else in the budget or not?
Yes, in the budget line item, you can always do a budget amendment, and you can move it from out line to line. Bottom line is, within the department, you've kind of moved money around as long as you don't increase the bottom line of the budget. Because that's what you have in this budget, so you can utilize funds from one department to another as an action of the council sometime during the year.
On the revenue side, we were supposed to see, and I say that, the budget needing, um, income from BID for cleaning services, paper, front end.
There's, the bills are all split. There's no income to the city. The bills are split. Uh, cit pays a portion of the bill direct to them, and city pays a portion of the bill direct to them. So there's no income related between the two. They're each paying for a pro-rata share of the service direct to the, into the supplier.
Well, you told us last year that that would reflect in the budget.
What's in the budget is what is the city's portion of what they're paying for those services.
And of the, um, fireworks, have there been any movement as far as funding sponsors, that sort of thing?
Just getting cranked up on that, working on it.
My question, I've still had to pay off spending $60,000, and the city's going to be $200,000 in the negative for fireworks. Do we have any other budgetary questions?
Just a comment that we've come a long way. Um, I just kind of want to honestly mention from initially where we started with looking at budgets and identifying them. Um, this is not an easy feat. Looking at budgets and identifying, and looking at where it goes, I think one of the big concerns we have when we started this is where would we be once our time, six months out, to when we leave and making sure that we leave the city in a good place and not in a real deficit. So, thank you, Ken Long.
Thank you.
For those people who bring in yells at you.
We hope I keep out fireworks, I expect.
Outside of the meeting, so, um, thank you.
Thank you.
Great job. It's been a moving target, because they want, uh, it all depended on how quickly we could develop the land out here and how well the developer was able to sell and build houses and collect those tax dollars. And now, it's, the table's starting to fit now with the commercial development starting. And if there were a big change, uh, change quickly, uh, once they start filling those positions in the commercial part.
Exactly, we all have to remember that when something comes online, we're a year behind.
Yeah, it's going to be a delay.
So it has to be on, we would not see anything that comes on. What we would see in next year's tax, tax reform is anything online as of January 1st, 2022, which means 7-Eleven will show up. Second 7-Eleven won't be open by then, so it won't show up. They'll show us, uh, construction in progress. Publix won't show up. You may see it on the, um, Windex, but not that much, because it's an already existing building by value. So, but there will be some changes with the improvements to the structure, et cetera. So, the following year, something comes in, and it gets built prior to, so we could be almost two years out from really seeing a major impact by the commercial on revenue for our budget. That's why we're looking at it as a close monitoring it all the time to make sure that we don't overspend on any ticket item that we're counting on. Our revenues are projected, and we have sufficient revenues, but don't have shortfalls.
Well, it was quite obvious in our initial developer's agreement with the, with the city from Mintel. The five-year, we saw, third year, I think, and the fourth, third year, we were really seeing it was going to be almost impossible to make that happen. The, uh, the additional funding that Mintel decided they'd cover us for two more years here, to make it a total of seven years. We have to be thankful we have that. Um, if they were able to do that for the city, and that's going to get us, I think, it looks like the Ken's project, uh, that's going to, it's going to be pretty thin right there, but it looks like we're pushing it steep by, yeah.
As long as we're in the black, I'm okay.
Yeah. But, uh, and there is, there are a couple of alternative, uh, alternatives that, speaking of Ken, that we, uh, something where to not get us quite there, we may have a little, uh, some ways to stock up any kind of real problem, so. I want to thank, Ken, also want to thank Mintel for, um, committing to, here's the area, to make us, to make us whole, so. Really treating it as a, uh, it's been quite a, it's been quite a feat to get, to get where we are. And thanks to Ken and Mintel for helping us out, getting to where we are.
I, uh, I couldn't agree more. I think that just the fact that we're projected to be able to stand on our own two feet on residential taxes alone by the projected age is incredible. I think even factor it in everything else. It's, uh, because I, I honestly didn't think we'd be able to. I thought we'd be going back to Mintel with their hands open like this. And the fact that it looks like we're not going to have to do so is really incredible. So it's just, I know staff worked really hard on this, so thank you. In terms of fireworks, I, you know, I promised the residents a big, beautiful fire. And we would, we would be celebrating America's freedom properly. And I know that the intent is we have to budget for it, but we're going to bring in some corporate sponsors. Yes, the city should be done, but I'm glad that we had that line item in there. Uh, I think the residents deserve it, so. Doing a great job, guys.
Yeah, the military is safe, so keep it safe. Do you have any, uh, any other elements on this, uh, slide?
I have none, but should you have additional questions?
We have a motion?
I'm in. Where are we at? 2021-30?
Yeah.
Yes, 2021-30. Motion to approve Resolution 2021-30.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor O'Connor to approve 2021-30, seconded by Councilwoman Long Robinson. Roll call. Vice Mayor O'Connor?
Yes.
Mayor Manning?
Yes.
Councilwoman Long Robinson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Crump?
Yes.
Councilman Paul?
No.
Motion carries four one.
Mayor, before you move on, we do need to announce to the public that the proposed military rate that you adopted of 5.125 mils is 118.4% of the goldback rate, which was 4.3296. And that the second and final public hearing on the military, as well as on the budget, will be September 27th, 2021, 6:30 PM here in Council Chambers. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to the first meeting. We have ordinance 2021-06, Chapter 8, Parking Relations and Land Development Regulations. We just went over this item, uh, okay, A, you mean? Would you read by title, Zoe, please?
Ordinance number 2021-06, An Ordinance of the City Council for the City of Westlake, Florida, Amending Regulations for Parking Within the City of Westlake, Providing for Purpose and Intent, Providing for Definitions, Providing for Residential and Commercial Property Parking Standards, All of Which Shall Become Part of the Code of Ordnances, Entitled Parking Regulations, Providing for Clarification, Providing for Conflict Clause, Providing for Separability, and Providing an Effective Date.
Do we have any additional questions or comments from the council on this item that was approved by the, uh, uh, suggested for approval by the, uh? So, no one has any other questions on this item? Then we have a motion.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance 2021-06.
Second.
Motion to adopt ordinance 2021-06 by Councilwoman Crump, seconded by Vice Mayor O'Connor. Roll call. Mayor Manning?
Yes.
Councilwoman Long Robinson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Crump?
Yes.
Councilman Paul?
Yes.
Vice Mayor O'Connor?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Item B, Ordinance 2021-07, Solid Waste and Recyclable Receptacles Collection and Storage Area, Storage Areas Minimum Requirements.
Denise is on the line.
Yeah, Denise?
Yes, good evening, Mayor Man, Manning, and council members. This item before you is an ordinance that is, first of all, Denise Malone, uh, NZ Consultants, for the record. Uh, the item before you establishes minimum requirements for the solid waste and recyclable receptacles and collection and storage areas. It includes provisions for general standards, access, location, maintenance, setbacks, screening, security, sizing, alternative compliance, retrofitting existing non-residential developments, dumpster enclosure details, compacters, and curbside pickup. Uh, this, these minimum requirements are those that are currently being employed and, uh, provided, uh, in the review through, uh, site planning that have come in. However, we wanted to, uh, officially put these into the code of ordinances, and so this ordinance does just that. Um, I wanted to speak to just three of those items I mentioned. The additional standards that we put in here, uh, the first includes the alternative compliance. This is a flexibility, uh, item that allows for applicants that can demonstrate, um, an alternative needs of meeting. The intent, uh, can come up with alternatives that could potentially, um, then be approved by the city. Uh, the second item, retrofitting existing non-residential developments. This is to acknowledge and recognize, uh, there may be current or existing situations, uh, with development on the ground that, um, may need to be accommodated, uh, differently because they may not meet the requirements. So it allows for a ratio of, uh, parking spaces, uh, to be utilized to meet, um, those requirements. And then the last one is the curbside pickup. In lieu of curbside pickup, it does allow for the city managers, does need, uh, specifically to approve, uh, that if it meets those, uh, minimum criteria, um, one of which is that it, they don't generate more than 90 gallons of solid waste per week. So these are for those maybe non-residential, smaller developments that don't necessarily need a full-fledged, um, dumpster area and can benefit from utilizing the curbside service. Again, this would be looked at by the city and ultimately would need to be approved. Um, with that, I wanted to say thank you to Catherine Roswell and also Don Herring for their review and, uh, input to the regulations. We, uh, all work together in a collaborative, uh, effort on this. And, um, with that, I will take any questions that you may have.
So, any questions?
Just to clarify the, uh, the intent, this is more so geared towards non-residential being that all the homeowners associations are actually governing where the receptacles might go in front of a home or on site.
This is more towards, towards commercial, this, uh, multi-family, towards, uh, town, maybe individual containers. They may come in with a apartment complex or a town, townhome complex where they want a dumpster scenario versus curbside collection. It provides that type of flexibility so that, again, the market kind of drives how they want their overall field to be. So they may, there are, there are some townhome situations where they have a common area for the dumpster versus a can in front of every waste townhome. So if that's their preference, it allows for those kind of things.
Wouldn't that be to, of the point of developer, actually wanting to determine that?
They would be, they would be determining that as they're coming in for approvals and stuff. So, um, for example, um, they have not come in for a common area, so they will have individual cans in individual locations. But if they wanted to change something and wanted a common area or refuge disposal, they could have. So this allows for that kind of flexibility.
And now we have a poll.
Now we have, now we have written down.
Explations. If they want to do that, we want to regulate.
I just want to add on our meeting agenda, cover sheet, this item has the motion to approve first read by staff, so. I guess we don't see any problems listed also.
No, not at all. We have recommended.
Thank you. There's no other questions? Do we have a motion? Motion to approve Ordinance 2021-07.
The motion by Vice Mayor O'Connor, seconded by Councilwoman Crump. Roll call, Councilwoman Long Robinson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Crump.
Yes.
Councilman Paul.
Yes.
Vice Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Mayor Manning.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Who we have, Item C, Ordinance 2021-09, Chapter 7, Mobility Regulations, Land Development Regulations.
Mayor, I apologize. I do not believe that the title was read on the previous ordinance.
Oh, you're right. You were right.
Ordinance 2021-07, An Ordinance of the City Council for the City of Westlake, Florida, Establishing Minimum Requirements for Solid Waste and Recyclable Receptacle Collection and Storage Areas, Which Shall Become Part of the Code of Ordinances Entitled Solid Waste and Recyclable Receptacles, Collection and Storage Areas, Providing for Codification, Providing for Conflict Clause, Providing for Severability, and Providing an Effective Date.
We have to go through the motion again. No, sorry, we're done. Thank you. Then we'll move on with Item C, Ordinance 2021-09, Chapter 7, Mobility Regulations, Land Development Regulations. This will be submitted by engineering. Zoe, would you read it by title? So we just started on our foot. Thank you.
Ordinance number 2021-09, An Ordinance of the City Council for the City of Westlake, Establishing Mobility Plans Within the City of Westlake, Providing for Purpose and Intent, Providing Utilization of Palm Beach County's Traffic Performance Standards for Motorized Vehicles, Providing for Vehicular Level of Service Standards, Provides for Traffic Impact Studies and Statements, Which Shall Become Part of the Code of Ordinances Entitled Mobility, Providing for Codification, Providing a Conflict Clause, Providing for Severability, and Providing an Effective Date.
Do you have any? Comments with the council?
No further comments beyond what we discussed at the end.
Okay, thanks. Questions? Or any comments from the council? This is President O'Connor in the LCA meeting, and was. Would you go ahead to advise the council to go ahead with this? So, do we know any other motions?
Make a motion to approve Ordinance 2021-09.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Councilwoman Long Robinson to approve Ordinance 2021-09, seconded by Councilwoman Crump. Roll call, Councilwoman Crump.
Yes.
Councilman Paul.
Yes.
Vice Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Mayor Manning.
Yes.
Councilwoman Long Robinson.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. We don't have those type of readings this evening, so we'll move on to the public hearing of our judicial. Item A, a resolution for the replat of specific track C2. And if you could read that by title, please, Zoe.
Resolution 2021-27. Resolution of the City Council for the City of Westlake, Florida, Approving a Replat of Track C2 of the Platte of Westlake Civic Track C2, Platte Book 128, Pages 33 and 34, and a replat of WMT Number 1 and OST 1 of the Platte of Persimmon Boulevard East, Platte 1, Platte Book 125, Pages 106 and 107, Public Records of Palm Beach County, Florida, lying in Section 1 Township 43 South, Range 40 East, City of Westlake, Palm Beach County, Florida, Providing for Recreation, Providing for Conflicts, Providing for Severability, and Providing an Effective Date.
Yeah, anyone testifying? Speaking on this item, you see some more to hear.
Mr. Mayor, I have a brief presentation if you would like.
Okay.
Just a moment.
Zoe will pull it up on the screen. I will walk you through it real quickly, just give you a quick update.
Just a moment, Mr. Herring. If there's anyone that wishes to make testimony or provide comment on this item, please state your name if you're on the virtual audience. Mr. Herring, will you state your name, please?
Donaldson Herring with Kotler and Herring, representing Minto PBLH.
Thank you. If there's anyone physically in attendance, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the information you are about to present shall be the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Herring. Are you going to start?
I sure will. Zoe, you can go ahead and go to the next slide, or if I can advance it myself, I will do so.
You are now the presenter, Mr. Herring.
Alrighty, I think I can advance here. Like it's locking up. Well, while I'm waiting for the computer to respond here, for the record, Donaldson Herring here tonight on behalf of Minto PBLH. And what we're looking to do here is to do really a fairly minor replat to a public civic parcel, Parcel C2, which is located just on the east side of Grove Marketplace, immediately west of and contiguous to Ilics, and immediately south of Town Center Parkway. So this parcel is being replatted so that we can create vehicular connectivity between the Palm Beach County Fire Station Site, which is Parcel C1, which has been constructed, and Parcel C2. So we're, there we go. We're making a minor modification to accommodate the interconnectivity between the two parcels, which will result in a small replat of an existing Seminole Improvement District drainage area, which will now become a buildable area. And that drainage area will end up being picked up in other lake areas of the master drainage system proposed by the overall master development. So the overall plot area is right about nine and a half acres in total size. If you could advance the slide to the next slide for me, Zoe, I'd appreciate that.
Yes, just a moment. Are you able to see it, Mr. Herring?
I'm not able to see it yet, but if the council can, that's all that matters.
Don, you won't read the second page of the platter from the first page?
Well, the first page of the platter is basically a standard language which is required by the Florida statutes, which identifies the minimum technical requirements of the statute and the various dedications to the entities associated with this. So in this particular case, the entities include Minto as the landowner, Seminole Improvement District, which will maintain the water management tracks, as well as Seminole Improvement District that will maintain some of the buffer tracks along Persimmon on the north side of Persimmon Boulevard, so that we maintain that beautiful landscaped Parkway feel that we have within the city. You can go to the next slide, Zoe. There we go. So this is the technical slide, and I'm going to, we're going to advance to the next so that you can really see the detail. So this aerial right here, the area in red shows you the existing platted boundary of Parcel C2. And you can see the lake, the green area there on the east side of Grove Marketplace, that's the existing water management area. We will be relocating that and incorporating it into the master drainage system. And really what the intent here is to ensure that we can provide connectivity so that a vehicle could travel between the counties, Parcel C1, the fire station site, and this site. We anticipate this property being utilized for civic public services. And so there's important requests by the county to provide that connectivity. Of course, immediately across the street, you can see the tax collector's office, which is starting to get close to being completed. There will be vehicular access across Ilics to get to the county tax assessor's office, but this is really intended to connect the fire station site with, which is Parcel C1, with Parcel C2. Zoe, if you can advance to the next slide. So this graphic here shows you really specifically the three new pieces of the platter. The area in yellow is the upland buildable area for the parcel. The area in red will remain a Seminole Improvement District Water Management Track. And the little area that's highlighted in green on the south side is really, it's functional to the civic parcel, and it can be crossed for the purpose of ingress and egress. But really what we've tried to do there is to maintain the beautiful Parkway feel that we have along Persimmon Boulevard, all the way extending to the east. So that just provides us with the ability that we can maintain that. That area is currently landscaped and being maintained by Seminole Improvement District, so that's just carried forward in the platter. And the little red arrow that you see basically shows you that the intent of this is to create the connectivity between the two parcels. And you can advance the slide, and I think that's probably it. That is. So this platter has been determined to be consistent with the minimum requirements of the city code as well as Florida statutes. And your city manager has spent months and months working on this with Palm Beach County, and we were happy to find a good resolution and look forward to your approval tonight.
Does anyone else want to add?
Tara Dewey, Lewis Law, Walker, on behalf of Minto PBLH LLC. I will just second that, I think, Ken for working with Palm Beach County and Sid for working with Palm Beach County to relocate that water management tract to make that a more usable space for them. We did receive some comments from Palm Beach County on the platter which we provided to the city, and we made the changes that were requested by the city. And so we are looking forward to completing this dedication to the county. And if you have any additional questions, I am here to answer them.
I do have. What were the county's recommendations?
There were scripters edits, just technical edits that we provided to your staff to tell us which is what they wanted us to do. We said, we'll do whatever you want.
One of them was, instead of having Minto's name as the platter, since they're currently simple, they wanted it to, what, owner of record or piece of the owner. That just, it's too nebulous. It should be whoever owns the property now. It'll get transferred to the dean when they need the property, or the county. You know, there's some page numbers that just were all flat page. I also want to report that this was approved by Seminole Improvement District today at their meeting, so they have approved it and accepted it as well.
I just want to comment that no other chance worked on this for a long time. Let's, we're saying, here at the LCA. It's been, that little strip, trying to get a vehicle, the question was, can we get a vehicle around? And it couldn't have been done on the way up to Great South, Nelson. You wrote again.
I also want to add that the individuals that we're dealing with with the county are of a mindset to figure out range to make things happen versus not make things happen. So I have seen in the county overall, in their road divisions and different divisions with some changes that have occurred in the county's hierarchy, I see a lot better working relationships within the fire department with a number of working with municipalities and other local governments to find solutions to the issue rather than bloodheads about things.
A big difference. That's a joy to hear. And I hope someone from the county is listening to this.
And I will add that one of the, and the reason it was really good to have a great team working on this dedication is that at the time that these approvals were done in 2014, the county did not know for what purpose they were going to use it, and didn't necessarily set the interconnect there. So I'm really happy that we all sat down and were able to make it work with all parties. So I think everyone's brought to that.
Good job. This is public hearing. Do you have any, anything from the public?
We received no previous comment cards. We'll give the virtual audience a moment. I don't believe anybody else stood to provide testimony. We have no additional comments, Mayor.
Thank you. With that, do you have a motion?
Make a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-27.
I'll second.
Motion made to adopt Resolution 2021-27 by Councilwoman Crump, seconded by Councilwoman Long Robinson. Roll call, Councilman Paul.
Yes.
Vice Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Mayor Manning.
Yes.
Councilwoman Long Robinson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Crump.
Yeah.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Herring. We have Item B, a resolution for the revised platter of Orchard's, Orchard's, Platte S, Westlake Phase 2. And anyone that's already speaking on the side?
Mr. Mayor, this is Donaldson Herring on behalf of Minto PBLH, and I would be more than happy to make a brief presentation.
Yeah, we're going to swear you in first.
If there's anyone else on the line that wishes to make a comment or to provide testimony, please state your name. Anyone that is present, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the information you are about to present shall be the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Zoe, would you read by title, please?
This item should also be presented if there's any ex parte communication. Resolution 2021-28, a resolution of the City Council for the City of Westlake, Florida, hereby approves a replat of track S, a portion of open space track number 11, open space track number 12, and water management track number 9. Orchids of Westlake, Phase 1, Platte Book 131, Pages 192 through 210, inclusive of the public records of Palm Beach County, Florida, within Sections 5, 6, 7, and 8, all in Township 43, South Range 41 East, City of Westlake, Palm Beach County, Florida, Providing for Recreation, Providing for Conflicts, Providing for Severability, and Providing an Effective Date.
Well, thank you, Zoe. If you'll pull up the presentation, we'll walk through it. And Mr. Mayor and council, again, for the record, Donaldson Herring here tonight on behalf of Minto PBLH. This is the orchards where we're, Platte S, Phase This is the Orchards, we're Pod S, Phase Two. It's a minor revision to the plat. I'm pleased to tell you, if I, I think I heard earlier this week that Minto is now starting to go to sale on, on this parcel. I understand that Groves is largely sold out. So this is the newest parcel in the, in the Westlake Development Plan. And we made a minor modification to the entrance location for the second phase of Orchard. So this particular plat has close to 600 homes in it. I think there's 598 in total between Phase One and Phase Two. So we have two fairly more of the more significant entrance ways into each of them. And this particular revision simply moves the location of the access point on Phase Two to be from what we refer to as the north-south connector road. It'll actually be named River Ben to properly align with Pod U to the, to the east. So Zoe, if you can go to the next slide, it might kind of point to that. Let's see it yet on my screen. The, the intent here is simply to, to align with the future development of Pod U, which is to the east. So the area of Phase Two is highlighted in S. This application did result in the increase of, I think, one lot, just because it became more efficient to locate here. So there's an access point on the north side off of Town Center Drive. Immediately opposite the secondary access to Meadows. This is a second access. It will be a fairly large gate, full gated access with turnaround. Very similar to what we will be building up on Town Center. So you can go to the next slide, Zoe. So this shows that in a little bit more, more detail. Other than the modification and this minor shifting, the lakes remain in the same location. The open space relate, remains largely in the same location. There's the same amount of recreation area proposed. So there's no decrease in, in any of the amenities that we propose to provide. You can go to the next slide, Zoe. Again, this is the data relative to this particular phase, and you can go to the next slide. Which basically shows the, the plat. So this is a minor replat. Really, the only part that's being replatted is the area that's to the, that's related to the entrance. This plat has not yet, as of this date, been recorded. So when we recorded, it will be recorded just one time. So while you have approved it in a different configuration, the plat has not yet been recorded. So we will record it one time and in its proposed configuration. You can go to the next slide. So this just shows you the technical requirements of the plat. So as, as you are well aware, plots are required to meet certain minimal technical requirements of the Florida statutes. Your staff and, and city engineer and their consultants have determined this meets all of those technical requirements. The plat has been reviewed by your city attorney. And the plat has also been reviewed and approved by Seminole Improvement District. So we would request your approval this evening, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you have.
Once again, Tara Dewey, Louis Longman Walker, on behalf of Minto PBLH LLC. So Don tried to steal my thunder, but I'm not gonna let him because I have more accurate, up-to-date information than he does. So Minto has officially sold out of Groves and opened Orchards for sale today. They sold 16 homes in five minutes. So to say that this is a community where people want to be is an understatement. So thank you. If you have any questions about the plat, I can also answer those.
Thank you, Tara.
Do you have anything, sir? It's not slowing down. We have any questions for Mr. Mayor? Dewey? Very simple, then it looks like so. So could, do we have a motion? There's no comment, any other questions?
Mayor, we have no public comment.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-28.
We'll second the motion.
Motion made by Councilman Paul to approve Resolution 2021-28, seconded by Councilwoman Crump. Roll call, Vice Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Mayor Manning.
Yes.
Councilwoman Long Robinson.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Crump.
Yeah.
Councilman Paul.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We want the public hearing resolutions, Resolution 2021-31 Residential Solid Waste Services Special Assessment. Zoe, can you read my title, please?
Resolution 2021-31, Resolution of the City of Westlake, Florida, relating to the provision of residential solid waste services in the City of Westlake, Florida, approving the assessment rate for residential solid waste services for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2021, imposing a residential solid waste services special assessment against assessed property located within the City of Westlake for the fiscal year beginning on October 1, 2021, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and providing effective date.
Are the details are set forth of the warehouse clauses? On the council, any questions regarding the process? Mr. Mayor, this is the final step in the whole process of collecting on the walls, et cetera, et cetera. Shashing the actuals. Yeah, there. This is the final step. We've already sent the, we've already sent the notice into the camera. It's gonna be on there. It should show in trim notes, et cetera. So last, last, got in the eye, across the last two. Do we have any public hearing, uh, public comment on this?
Mayor, we received no previous comment cards. However, we'll give the virtual audience a moment to raise our virtual hand. If you wish to make a comment, please raise your virtual hand. State your name and address. If you have been muted, please press star six to speak. Please state your name and address.
Oh, I don't know. It's, it has to do with Sid, the non-alarm. Is this part of, it's not, I don't know when I can talk about that.
No, Seminole Improvement District is not part of this meeting. That's a good public hearing this afternoon at four o'clock.
Any other questions? You guys taking any other questions?
We'll take questions on this item.
And at the end?
Comments?
We have, we have the comments section, but there, there'll be some clarification. We can clarify, city manager will clarify the difference I, between what Seminole Improvement District is responsible for and then what the city's responsible for. Like there's some clarity issues that need to be.
Yeah, my questions, I don't know about that.
About that. Yours, yours is about the, the resolution, the solid waste services? Okay, so we'll have to wait till the end. So we have any comment on, any questions about 2021-31 Residential Solid Waste Services Special Assessment? Are there any comments or questions regarding that from the public?
Mayor, we had no public comments.
If there's nothing further from the council, then can we have a motion?
Make a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-31.
Second.
We have a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-31 by Councilwoman Crump, seconded by Vice Mayor O'Connor. Roll call, Mayor Manning.
Yes.
Councilwoman Long Robinson.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Crump.
Yeah.
Councilman Paul.
Yes.
Vice Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Yes, pushing in the new business. Item A, election to county canvassing board. Would you read this resolution by title, please?
Resolution 2021-26, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Westlake, Florida, delegating all canvassing duties as defined in the Florida Election Code and the Florida Administrative Code to the county canvassing board established in accordance with section 102 dot 141 Florida statute. Authorizing and designating the city clerk to serve as the city's official representative in all transactions with the Palm Beach Supervisor of Elections in relation to matters pertaining to the use of the registration books and records necessary for holding municipal elections within the city, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Split it by administrators, station. Basically, if you read the resolution, what was just read, you'll understand it. It's just a plain Zoe, previous, our seat work, and handle all the people's support. Duties with the county. Is that correct? Correct. Any questions on that? So the motion, well, are there any questions from the council, from the public on this item?
Mayor, we received no previous comments. We'll give the virtual audience a moment to raise their virtual hand. If you wish to make a comment, please raise your virtual hand. If you've been muted, please press star six to speak. Please state your name and address. Mayor, we have no public comment.
Make a motion for Resolution 29-26.
Motion to approve Resolution 2021-26 by Councilwoman Long Robinson, seconded by Vice Mayor O'Connor. Roll call, Councilwoman Long Robinson.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Crump.
Yeah.
Councilman Paul.
Yes.
Vice Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Mayor Manning.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. As of being removed to September 22nd. City Council members. Start with the, Councilwoman Long Robinson.
I just kind of wanted to thank Ken for taking a, a meeting with Dr. Campbell for the partnership. It was a successful meeting, and I'm sure once things are ironed out, the manager will come to us with detailed information of how successful that partnership is going to be, for what, like it will be able to create jobs as well as internships and, and how's the economy. So that's a really good thing. I noticed, Mr. Castle, that the Happy Program seems to be doing much better or in a better situation than what it was. I read your report, so you kind of, I know what she said. You do have a closing and then you have 20 in the pipeline, which is far different than what we've seen before. So can we?
We currently have approximately 20 individuals that have been in the pipelines. As with a lot of the houses now, you might be buying a house today, but it's not closing until almost a year. Most people got in under the timeframe and under the thresholds that allow them to be part of the Happy Program. They're now starting to come up towards their closings, so we do have that. I do estimate that when the townhouse project comes out of the ground, that we should have a lot more of those potentially would also qualify into the Happy Program. So I expect more. And I was starting to see some of the closings have been spread out over the last few months.
I know at one time we did talk about looking at implementing, which is, but we don't need to, we're selling now. But that we talked about implementing another program possibly for housing. Are we still looking at that? Are we, are we still looking at, have a legal, look at the happy criteria, things of that nature? Are we still doing that?
Yes, we're working with legal on the criteria without to modify it. Again, the biggest thing on the Happy Program, the original intent was to help people with their first house, not tenure, just provide housing per se, was to help them close that gap that a lot of people have on their first house. And sometimes on their second house, there's a gap that they're, that they're right in that threshold where a baby can qualify for all kinds of things, but in reality, you're more sure. That's really the intent of the program, is to cover that gap.
Thank you. Just, just to clarify real quick, Dr. Campbell is the principal of Seminole Ridge. And the program is to allow interns to come and work it, and come and build.
It'll be with the Windex fee.
Awesome.
We, we did have a conversation with him and it, it kind of gave us more information about what their program covers. They even go into finances. And so the manager is going to be talking with some people, personnel from the school. I'll talk to the magnet coordinator and we'll have a concrete program for the students at Seminole Ridge. They'll be able to help with the development. So there must be with the development at Windex fee as well as price fellowship. And so what we're trying to do, and what we talked about doing is possibly when they do that, have internship opportunity as well as maybe even offer the job because a certificate, certification is given from Seminole Ridge once they complete that program. So what's the way, if that's positive for us to be able to do, and we did have a press release out about it, which was good as well. So I think that makes us stand out, right? And as far as, so we're going to be able to work and deal with that commercial aspect and developers to be willing to be open to those students creating that. That's really exciting. So it's to each of you, right? It's to, it's to the vision of, of Westlake and Minto. So we're excited.
Originally, it was, it was thought about on the construction slash development side. But after talking with Councilman Robinson and Dr. Campbell, who looked at it and said, oh gee, they've got courses for accounting, all kinds of other business programs that could be utilized by Windex and by Publix, et cetera. So those are the other additional things that we're pushing now to see how we can make it partnerships so that the school can feed into their programs that they can utilize, that the kids can get experience in all aspects of the businesses. Well, from a, from an education standpoint, Councilwoman Robinson, you've spearheaded quite a few things that we've done here making it possible to put us on with, working with schools and with students and kids and with a lot of your efforts. So I can't keep forward to do. Councilwoman Crump.
I was just gonna ask about the Happy Program. We just answered it, so we'll have any habits.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor? Yeah, I've got a few comments. So I was pleased to see the report on FPU progress. And they promised, that's in the manager's notes. Looks like that's going along well and they're projected to be on track, their lead extension. But I'm glad to see that. Phase Two of the adventure park, I know we approved that. Have their permits been issued? Are they gonna break ground soon? Buying lines, wanna know.
The permits haven't been issued yet, but on today's meeting, I expect the, at the next meeting, at the October meeting, you'll have your final site plan for approval. I understand the plans are in and that you're trying to go vertical as fast as possible. They've had some modifications to what they were originally doing, but it is, it is on.
So next meeting, we'll have the final site plan?
The October.
We've moved back to the, are we talking about the adventure park?
Phase Two.
Phase Two.
Phase Two, yeah.
Yes, that was approved by council. And then basically they, they are looking into putting together the construction drawings. And I'm not sure when exactly they are. the construction drawings, and I'm not sure when exactly they are submitting the construction drawings. Maybe Don King knows more about it, but we are waiting for them very much.
Yeah, I believe that they're imminently ready to submit for permit if they haven't already. So it's a priority project. They've already selected a contractor, and I think they want to start as soon as possible.
Excellent, thank you. Alicia touched on it at the beginning of the meeting, seven eleven, twin opening was absolutely good. There was a lot of excitement and anticipation around that, and it was, it was very cool. I think it's a very successful addition to Westlake. Let's see, I had, I had the opportunity to go tour the solar fund, which was really cool. It's incredible that being one of the very first major investments to our city, to go see it in person and see everything that it does, it was excellent. Finally, I attended the luncheon for the literacy coalition.
Thank you.
Which was very, very idle. Literacy is so incredibly important. Great organization, the Palm Beach County Literacy Coalition. They, you think of literacy just as reading, and it's not, I mean, they go into email etiquette, there's just life skills. I did sign up for a program that they have called Read For The Record, where I'll be reading virtually to some little kids and stuff like that. Really cool, cool experience, so thank you, Mayor, for passing that the tongue to me. I was pleased to let you attend that. And finally, just thank my colleagues for the leadership.
Thank you.
Well, I want to thank you for attending the meeting in my shoes, unfortunately, I wasn't able to make that, and also, seven eleven, unfortunately, I was, I was on for Wednesday when they first had it, and they got changed to Friday, and while I said something at home, they said, don't you remember that on Friday, we're leaving Thursday night, we won't be back until Thursday? So unfortunately, I wasn't able to make it, so everyone made it, thank you for being there, and I heard it was a big success. And it's, I can see it, when I pulled in, there's six cars, and at the gas pumps already, and there's cars up by the door, I mean, and as I'm sitting here waiting to come in for a couple minutes, they're pulling in and out, so it's, they're gonna be very successful here, I'm sure. And again, I'll say thank you to Ken for the leadership, but it's, it's been quite, it's been quite a ride, we were talking about it, and Nelson, before, before the meeting, and it's amazing where we, where we started and where we are now. A lot of hard work. Thank you, Terrence, thank you. With that, we're moving on to the S and stop reports that were in the package, everybody, does anyone have any comments on the package? Sorry, the captain's returners report, by a rescue, and shares with you. Okay. We have a report from the city attorney, is the city attorney happy?
Nothing to report, thanks for all letting me be here.
Thank you, thank you for being here. Mr. Castle.
Just a couple of things, Mr. Mayor. One, it was alluded to on certain things, about accomplishing things. Carlos was mentioned, et cetera. As a manager, it does my heart joy to hear that, because it means that staff that I've been able to assemble that we have here, have taken ownership of making sure that they respond in an appropriate manner to the residents, to the city, which makes my life a lot easier, because I have a bunch of people that are working with me, and Nielsen's team, and Suzanne's team, and Building Department and stuff, who really want to make this a top-notch city and operation. And it's, it's a joy for me to work with these people, and to work with you as a council that sees the vision, that keeps the vision going, to make it work is just, it's phenomenal. Thank you. The other thing is, as reported, FPU is on track, they'll be coming up, if you notice, they, I've already put in something like eleven thousand feet, I noticed that they put in probably seven or eight hundred feet on Friday that they pulled in, they're continuing to move up as fast as they can, they had a little bit of a problem, because they couldn't go too fast till JW Cheaton got their lane closures out of the way, so that they can do the pipeline lane closures. Now that Cheaton's out of the way, they can do their other pipeline closures, so they'll be coming up, they're like four blocks south of Sycamore right now. They should be able to do that in another week or two, and then they'll be coming up all the way through here. Their underground oars into their depressurization station is already laid out, their depressurization station is already laid out as well, so they'll be continuing to look for it. And that's all I have this time. Thank you.
Alicia, with public comments. I'm gonna, I'm gonna read this, but I do want to make an exception. Okay, this, this section of the agenda allows for comments for the public to speak on items only presented on the agenda. Each thief will be given a total of three minutes to comment. Public comment card should be completed and returned to the city court. I know we have some other, there's some clarity issues here, that we kind of need to clear up about, some improvement district in the city, that's what the responsibilities are, and so I'd like to start with you, if you come to the podium, state your name and address, and what your question is, and I think that Mr. Castle will be able to handle, canceling that pretty easily, the way I got it described.
Okay, I just want to say thank you for, you know, I guess I was confused, and, you know. So yes, my name is Monet, my last name is Gines, I live at five nine seven five, King Fisher Boulevard. And I was just kind of confused on the Sid assessment, the non, is it the laram, the laram? Ours kind of doubled, and I was a little shocked, I understand, and I really appreciate you guys putting the trash bill in now, I totally understand that. It just mind jumps like over a thousand dollars, and I understand, you know, Sid, that we do have this, it is a new city, I still am, I understand a little theory of a CDD, I know that it's not, but to me, it feels, and a lot of other residents that weren't able to attend, feel it is this way, I'm just not understanding, I understand like going up, say a hundred dollars every year, a hundred fifty bucks, but like doubling from my last one was like four something, for the non-borne, for that actual, just the land part, it's like four forty-eight, and now it jumped to one thousand one hundred and sixty, thirty-six dollars? I just, that's like a little bit hitting hard, like I appreciate the military, you guys are amazing for keeping that, I was praying about that, so I really do commend you guys for that. So I was really happy with that, it might pass my own fifty-seven bucks, something like that, whatever, but this, I was just like, wow, you know, it is a big increase, especially when you have a family, you know, you're trying to figure out things, so I don't understand that aspect of it, I don't know if you guys can explain, or if I have to speak to somebody else, and again, I do appreciate your time. That was my big thing, is that, why the significant increase, and is there a stop to it? Is it going to significantly increase every single year? You know, like that's what my big thing is.
So Mr. Castle will be able to. I'll give one's a general response, and then I'll think of your specific thing afterwards, I'll get some more information to look into. In the original formation, not formation, but the original assessment methodology went back in twenty fifteen, fourteen fifteen, when the water control plan was developed for the entire buildout of Westlake, of the four thousand, forty-six, fifty-four homes, and all the lakes, roads, parks, et cetera, et cetera. The original estimate at buildout was that the average property owner would be somewhere between twelve hundred and fifteen hundred dollars a year to maintain that amount of infrastructure. We are over, almost close to sixty percent constructed at this point in time, that has been turned over to the improved district, so therefore, we're actually at about half of that estimated original value at this point in time. So that's why the big increase this year, we've had a tremendous amount of, as everybody's seen, Rose wasn't here, you know, Sky Cove, et cetera, was not completed and turned over on the lakes and the roads, et cetera, so once that gets turned over, then it's soon improved districts' responsibility to maintain, it only has revenue once a year from the non-lorm assessments. But I do need to get with you on yours specifically, and I will look into it, give you a better explanation why yours went from that, because I don't remember seeing in the chart anyone that jumped that much. I saw them go from four to six, from two fifty to five fifty, but I do not remember the chart off the top of my head, anything that went from like four to a thousand, and I'll look at it as an individual and look into it for you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Annie Tapia Rodriguez, five nine nine one, Whitberwell. First of all, I haven't been around for about two years, so I just want to commend you, you guys are doing an amazing job. This is just moving on so beautifully, I am so happy to live in Westlake, I can tell you. I especially want to thank, I almost called him JP, but Vice Mayor O'Connor, it's amazing, he is a blessing, I mean, you guys are all doing a great job, you're doing a great job also, but I just have to tell you, just knowing that Vice Mayor O'Connor is on the board, I can speak for a lot of people, we feel so at peace, he's got incredible communication, incredible serving leadership, and just always seeking to make the community better and to serve us, so special thank you to you, and to all of you, thank you. I am also confused about that, I know Vice Mayor O'Connor tried to explain it to me, I'm very confused, mine is up about six hundred dollars, I would like to know also how that happened, but I'm interested, since I haven't been around, I would like to have a copy of the budget for this year and the last two years, so I could just see what's going on. Who would I reach out to to get that?
They're on the Sid website.
So just go there?
Yeah.
Okay, great, so I gotta, gotta go to the computer, gotta go to the computer, okay, so I'll speak to my sixteen-year-old, but thank you so much, I just, again, I am very happy, I'm happy to be back, and thank you for the work you guys are doing.
Hi, my name is Joe Stewart, one fifty-nine twelve, Pomingbird Lane, and like I said, she said, I love here, it's Westlake, and that's it, it's a great place. And the same issue that I have with my, because I think I called into the office already, and they did tell me that the reason why your Lering taxes went up, is because they, it's about close to fifty or a little bit over fifty percent that, you know, has big developed, and therefore went up, mine also went up about eight hundred dollars, that's a big difference, between six and eight hundred dollars, and that's the same thing, I was like, wait a minute, I mean, I'm from New Jersey, and I know I pay hell of a tax there, I don't expect to, you know, my, this is my October, be two years up here, and I did not expect for it to go up so drastically, you know, so that is what I also would like to, to speak to someone about, and see, is it gonna be like this all the time? I was talking, I didn't, I know that when the commercial properties come in, it should be better, but then, how long is it still gonna go up next year? Because we're not gonna get all your commercial properties in by next, next year, because I would, like, listening to you guys, anything that's built January, that's when it goes into effect, so, so.
Following year.
Your following year, so now, you know, I don't, we have the seven eleven, you don't know what's gonna come up between now and then, is our tax gonna go up again?
One point to have to remember, the ad born taxes are year in a year, the non-ad born taxes are current year.
Are current year?
Yes.
Okay, but it still doesn't, it doesn't have, it doesn't have an effect of what's being built around the community here?
The.
The non.
The unit mix and the number of units that are on board does help spread out the cost.
Okay.
But it's based upon the projections of what is there, there's an entire methodology that is done, to make sure that everybody has a cost benefit analysis for, it gets into the detail of, if your house is further to the east on a specific road.
Okay.
Drive more of that road than somebody further west, so you'd have more benefit of that road than a person does here, I mean, that's the details that.
That is like, that's in the calculation of.
It all goes, it all goes in, I don't do them, I don't even claim to really totally hundred percent understand, I know the component pieces that go in there, I know that they're also written to the point where people that do them have, are also expert witnesses on ones that aren't written properly, so that they know where the pitfalls are, because there have been a number of lawsuits in the past few years on methodologies, and how they were done twenty years ago, fifteen years ago.
Okay.
And they're really getting down to a big cost benefit analysis for each property, to all that goes in.
Yeah, it goes in the, in the calculation of all that, but it's just, it's, I mean, I can see, I can see that, but then, you know, you can't, you talk about two hundred dollars, I can see that, but when you start hitting like six hundred dollars and up, that is like, you just, you know, we just got here.
Yeah, I make a quick, quick point, I, I think that the sticker shot that a lot of people are encountering, right now, is part of that amount is the three hundred and fifty or so dollars, and you would have been direct billed for the trash services, that we now have included in our taxes.
So I'll, I'll get your information, I'll look at your individual.
Okay.
Trip notices, and I'll be able to respond as to whether it's a combination of solid waste issue.
Yeah, because I, I have to double check that, because I think maybe the solid waste was still a little different, it was like three bit, you know.
Solid waste will come under your, under your tax bill, on your trip notice, you'll have Seminole and Blue District.
Right.
You're gonna have a county disposal fee, or a collection.
I think it was like three.
And then you're gonna have a collection of two hundred million dollars and stuff like that.
So you're trying to tell me that, okay, that, that.
The non, there may be three components.
There's three components, I remember, there's three components.
The non-lorm may look for one that increases in the non-lorm, but each one is cumulative, same as, if the school board goes up, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, but the first, two, two is not bad, but the, the, the Seminole District, that is like.
I'll get, ooh, went up. Give me your, your trip notice, and I'll walk you through.
Okay, I don't have it, okay.
That's fine.
I'll give you my, my, okay. Thank you.
Excuse me, can I just send you mine also?
Yes.
Excuse me, any other? Okay, I'll put a couple in. Zoe, we have anyone else?
We receive no previous comment cards, however, we'll give the virtual audience a moment to raise their virtual hand. If you wish to make a comment, please raise your virtual hand. If you've been muted, please press star six to speak. Please state your name and address. Mayor, I see no comments.
For item regarding Sid, please reach out to Seminole and Blue District directly, because it is a separate governmental entity. I do happen to manage both of them, so I can give some answers, but on the dais, I'm sitting here as the city manager, is my primary responsibility, but since I do have knowledge and working understanding of Sid, I can answer some questions, but please, you don't need to wait to hear, reach out directly to Sid at the Sid phone number or Sid email, and we will get back to responses to anybody, that's just as a general rule, it has to do with Sid, go to Sid first, and if it gets up to me, or you get to me, somehow we'll get it worked out, and figure out what it is, and get you the right answer.
Maybe we should put something on the website, and explains the difference.
Maybe we should put something on the website that explains the differences between some improvement district and the city, the explanation, so that people can understand why they should be contacting some improvement district rather than the city offices. If we can get some clarity on that and do some writing, and then maybe we'll send something out as a notice, uh making it very clear, as, as, as clear as possible, um, what, what doors should be knocking on.
So you said, if I get in touch with Sid, they're gonna explain this to me, which they already do, cause I already called them, it was on the telephone number is there.
And as a specific item for yours, if you reach out to me tomorrow
Okay.
in the afternoon, I've got meetings in the morning, um, I will look it up, and walk through it, and give you exact where you're at and what's going on.
Okay.
Also, there's an F A Q on the website, on the assessments and stuff like that, if you still have questions after that, again, reach out to me and I'll respond to your problem.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. We will have, be having our next city council final budget hearing meeting on September twenty seventh at six thirty, and we'll also be doing the city goals and objectives annual uh work plan update, that time also. With that, we'll adjourn at um eight oh two. Thank you.